All right, welcome everyone. I call the September 1st, 2020 special city council meeting to order. So before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to welcome our state legislators, Senator Derek Stanford, Representative Davina Duer, and I'm looking, do I see Representative Shelley Kloba yet?
She's not here yet, but she did say she was planning on joining.
All right, we'll keep on going. And then along with our lobbyist Shelley Helder of Gordon Thomas Honeywell. So I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. So proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was extended until September 30th. Therefore, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via links from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption in the meeting, the connection will be terminated. So at this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position on the weather call. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember McCullough. Member McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
And Councilmember Duer is here as Representative Duer, so thank you.
All right. In addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city clerk Laura Hathaway, city attorney Paul Byrne, finance director Chris Bothwell. And then we have some department directors as well that have joined the meeting. I see public works director Aaron Leonhart, director Nick Stroop. Oh, we have Chief Grun. All right, I'm not going to go through everyone. So everyone else, hi. So for council members, if you want to speak, please indicate by holding up your yellow speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen. I'll call in you as I see them. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. And please remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. And good luck with unmuting yourself. So all right, let's move on to our agenda.
Could I interrupt just a second? On my, I don't know how this is reading for everyone else, but only about two, three of you, the rest of you are visual. Everybody else has no video. I don't know if that's happening for everyone else, but it'd be worth checking on.
I think your computer might be having some issues today, Deputy Mayor Zornz. As she just went dark on me. All right, hopefully, oh, there you're back. All right. All right, technology, so amazing thing. So thank you everyone for coming today before our regular city council meeting. So we wanted to just take this opportunity to bring the legislators and our city council together to give updates on what's been going on within the city, what we're hoping to accomplish. And since we're in such an unusual time with COVID and our budgets right now, it just seems like lots of information to share, so we'll be hearing from city manager. First of all, speaking on diversity, equity and inclusion and our law enforcement update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen. So everyone can see that? Great. Well, welcome. We really appreciate the first district legislators joining us this evening. We just have some brief presentations to give an update on where we are with the city of Bothell. Give some context to some of the things that we've been experiencing during 2020. And obviously, it's been a challenging year for all of us. Within the city of Bothell, an all law enforcement update. First, I'd like to mention, obviously, we had a very tragic loss this year of the loss of Officer Jonathan Shoup. This is to lose someone of your own team is a very, it's just a tragic loss. And it impacts an organization and a community. There really are no words. And so it will take time for us to heal. It will take time for us to to mend and to understand what happened and to grow from this experience. But our focus continues to be on serving our community. The police department does that with great pride, with great fairness, with great compassion and great equity. It is a priority and a value of our police department. And I'm very proud of the work that they continue to do, even as they themselves grieve with the loss of one of their own. So from law enforcement, it's, we've also had some national challenges from the national sort of stage. And our Bothell community has shared those, their thoughts with us as well. We've worked very hard, our police department and our police chief, to be communicative and to interact and respond to the questions that our community has, the aid can't wait and other types of questions like that. We have posted information on our website and we've shared who we are and what we do. And the chief is here if any of the legislators have any additional questions. But we've really worked hard to be open and to continue that dialogue. Relationship building is one of the priorities of this police department and it has been for years. And will continue to be as we continue to build those relationships with our community. So we look forward to those continuing discussions. And obviously during COVID, it's very challenging for us to do community engagement. But it is a priority and we'll continue to talk to the council about how do we do that? And how do we stay engaged with our community and deliver those exceptional services to our community? Our equity, diversity, equity and inclusion initiative, so this began actually a couple of years ago. In the early 2017, the council passed a welcoming city resolution, really talking about how important it was to welcome all who are in Bothell, that you feel safe and that we treat everyone equitably and that we are a welcoming community to all. And from that work, we created the diversity and inclusion committee. And that committee's been working for the last couple of years, working on some strategies and identifying some needed resources. And now we're looking at best practices and our own organization and what things we can do to be even more diverse and make sure that we're equitable and to include all who are within our organization and our community, however broad that may be. And we're looking for short and long term solutions. And we'll be presenting a report to the council on September 15th and looking for direction from them on next steps on how to move forward with this initiative. Another program that we're particularly proud of, and I know all three of you legislators have heard about this, but it just really deserves to be mentioned as often as we can. Our radar navigator program just has been so incredibly successful and Bothell's been a leader in this program. And very proud to be a part of it. We are looking for additional funding as always. The King County had provided us a significant amount of money for this program. There have been some projected cuts to the program, but we are committed to this program. And we feel that it's made a huge difference in our ability to deliver services effectively to our community. Another thing that we're looking at for the 21-22 budget, and I see that Judge Rosano is on the call in the meeting as well. This is a really important initiative to the judge and to the council as we look at how do we better deliver services to our communities. Cities are generally not social service providers. That's what counties are for. But the need seems to be there and just continuing to grow. And so we at the local government level, at the city level, are looking for ways that we don't overlap services. But how can we be part of the solution? And so one of the things we're looking at is a community court. There may be some opportunity to fund that through our public safety levy that was passed by our community a couple of years ago. We really want to connect our human service funding that we provide to our community. How do we better connect that to our Bothell residents? So certainly regionally, people can benefit from that. But how do we really deliver it to our community? And we're looking at these options as part of our community court and resource center to be able to do that. And we feel that there's a need for a navigator for non-police related interactions. And so how do we help our community who do need services? Help them navigate through the complex system of services and get them connected to the services that they need. So this is one of our large initiatives that we've been working on the last couple of months. And we'll be presenting to the council in October and looking for direction to be able to fund that in the 21-22 budget. So those are some of the things that are happening from our law enforcement, our community services perspective. And happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. I see nothing?
Yeah, no.
So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Bothwell. He is our finance director. And he's going to give the three legislators an update on our financial status.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Bothwell, finance director here at the city. I'm going to share a presentation with you.
Trying to stop sharing.
Okay, so I'm going to apologize in advance. As I put this thing together, I realized there really isn't any good news to share with you. So this is not going to be a very uplifting presentation, but it's honest, so we'll just go with it. So I'm going to start by describing a few of our financial challenges. First up is a structural deficit. And as you may be aware, a structural deficit is a situation where expenditures grow faster than revenues. So it's a situation that nearly all cities find themselves in due to the 1% annual property tax cap. So Bothell's been dealing with issues associated with its structural deficit for a while. And in the recent past, has been using fund balance to balance its budgets. Bothell has an operating deficit in the current biennium. And the first look at the 21-22 budget during budget development revealed a $12.5 million operating deficit. So the structural deficit is one of our biggest financial challenges. Another challenge is revenue losses associated with the pandemic. Early in the pandemic and with very little data, we forecasted a $5 million deficit just for 2020. Bothell doesn't have enough general government reserves to sustain a year with a $5 million deficit. So immediate actions were taken to shore up the financial sustainability of the organization. Those actions included layoffs, furloughs, a hiring freeze and a spending freeze. The result of those actions was a more manageable deficit of just under $2 million. But the layoffs and furloughs were especially painful for the organization and for the community. So next is recession uncertainty. We've been dealing with the pandemic for nearly six months and we still don't have much data to help us predict where the economy is going. Having a pandemic on the front end of an almost certain recession makes it unusual and difficult to predict. So we're currently modeling an average recession. It's possible that will prove to be overly optimistic and we'll have to make further adjustments. So finally, Bothell currently has an operating approximately 60 days of general government operating reserves. We don't have a rainy day fund or a budget stabilization fund or an opportunity fund. So disruptions to revenue are especially concerning. So Bothell's identified several strategies to address our biggest financial challenges. The first is monitoring and timely action. Due to the city's lack of general government reserves, Bothell doesn't have the luxury of taking a wait and see approach to revenue disruptions. So it's especially important that we pay close attention to things that could disrupt revenues and take timely action. That's exactly what was done in response to the pandemic and those efforts were effective, but they were difficult. On a previous slide, I mentioned that we have a significant operating deficit. The strategy to address that is to continue to work to realign services with resources. Basically, we're looking to cut expenditures to a level that gets us to a balanced budget. In most, if not all cases, there are impacts to the services we provide to the community, so these cuts are challenging. We are also currently working on our capital facilities plan update and the theme for that is to finish what we've started. That's because we don't have the resources to start a lot of new projects. A significant portion of our capital resources are also expected to be used to finish the environmental cleanup of several properties in the newly revitalized downtown. So eventually those properties will be sold. And if there's anything left after we pay, repay the cleanup expenditures, the proceeds will be used to rebuild fund balance among other deferred needs. And finally, we're focusing on financial sustainability. We've come to the point where financial sustainability is front and center, is an important consideration for nearly everything that we do. So I also have a few things that are areas of concern that we're watching closely. And the first is a deeper prolonged recession. There doesn't appear to be a consensus among economists about the likely depth or duration of a recession. But based on the preceding slides, it probably doesn't need to be said again. But the deeper, a deeper prolonged recession would require the city to make additional adjustments to its budget. We will also be paying close attention to how the state deals with its budget issues. State shared revenues have been impacted in the past. We are hoping this isn't the case this time around as the impacts at the city level would be significant if the state decides to balance its budget with cuts to some of those programs. And finally, inflation is a significant threat. I touched on it when I mentioned the structural deficit, but it's worth repeating. The difference between inflation and the 1% property tax cap has lost revenue to the city. All the cities cost track with inflation. And if a significant revenue like property tax is increasing at a rate that is lower than inflation, then we have a funding gap. And with all the money that's being pumped into the economy at a time when national production is falling, it's very possible that high inflation will become a relevant topic in the near future, which would worsen our budget issues. So unfortunately, it's an honest presentation of kind of where we are, but it's not really uplifting. That's the end of it. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, I don't see any, so I'm going to share one last slide. So this is the city's response to COVID-19, as I'm sure you've heard from many of your cities in the area. This has been challenging. We activated our ECC on March 2nd. We've been in a full ECC or a partial ECC activation since March 2nd. We continue to meet on a weekly basis. This has put a strain on resources and certainly has taken a lot of time and attention and resources to respond to this pandemic. We quickly transitioned staff to telecommuning, as many, many organizations did in our region as well as across the United States. We have been working from home since mid to late March and continue to do so. Our city hall is closed to the public. However, we're delivering full services to our community. We're very proud of that, as many local governments are as well. We are working on a reentry plan, but we continue to see that reentry, basically meaning coming back to work and reopening city hall, seems to be a prolonged goal. And so we're projecting now probably 2021 sometime that staff would actually come back and come back into the building. And we'd start to see some normalcy. So we're continuing to make sure that we're working effectively and delivering important services to our community from a telecommuting standpoint. We did receive $1.4 million as part of the CARES Act funding. Very grateful that the governor has shared that with us. We have distributed that in three ways. We have provided it to our community, so it will be distributed for rental assistance, food and utility bills that cannot be paid to our businesses. We did a grant program. We'll be distributing, if the council approves the additional amount, nearly $400,000 to our businesses in Bothell. And the council put aside about a half million dollars to reimburse us for our own expenses. Recent work this week in trying to determine the actual full cost of the COVID response. And that means any expenses that have been expended, any money, monies that have been expended since the beginning of COVID that are eligible for reimbursement will far exceed several millions of dollars. So we certainly appreciate the half million. We understand the governor is allocating more. But the cost impacts on local governments is far beyond any reimbursement that we're receiving. So it's clearly had an impact for us and it's something that we'll continue to struggle with in the months, months ahead. And again, happy to take any questions. And I will turn it back over to the mayor.
As I was saying, good luck with mute. So yeah, so anyone have any questions on any of those topics? Not seeing any. So I guess Senator Stanford, Rep. Duer, while we have you here. So are there things that the city of Bothell can do to provide support for either of you?
Well, so I'll jump in. First, thanks for the presentations. It's, it's just helpful for me to, to hear more details about what's going on in Bothell, how you're responding to the pandemic and the budget issues. And I'll just give you very briefly a few points about what's going on at the state level. So as you know, we have a budget problem as well in the multi-billion dollar range. And we're trying to figure out how to, how to cope with that. So, so you know, budget support obviously is going to be difficult all the way around. Also wanted to, I guess, touch on a couple of points that were made in the presentations. I was, I was glad to hear the emphasis on, on the eight can't wait points and the, and also just more generally, the diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, these are important issues at the state level as well. And I think we're going to be taking action on, on some of those policies in the next session. There, there is a possibility of a special session this year at some point, but nothing is set on that. It's not clear if that's going to, going to happen or not at this point, but it's a possibility, just so you're aware of that. And, and yeah, I'll stop there. Just, just wanted to kind of cover a couple of, of high level points. But it's, it's helpful for me to see what's happening here in Bothell. And you know, I think the city's been doing a great job of coping with the tough things that have, have been hitting us lately. I think much better than many other cities in our state right now. So, so kudos for, for that. And, and I'll, I'll just stop there and maybe Representative Duer wants to say something.
Representative Duer? Do you have any comments or anything to add? Not sure if you're having technical difficulties. I see an orange triangle. That's never a good sign.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we seem to be having an issue with people feeding in and out of the meeting with their video and their audio. So hopefully she'll come back on in a moment.
All right. So Senator Stanford. So I know one item that always is, is a concern for the city especially is, you know, our, the unfunded mandates. So any items that, you know, is a good of a thought or intentions. Just putting, you know, requests or demands on the city are already struggling budget times, you know, is always a concern. But I know we, we always say this, so I don't want to delabor the fact too much.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, it looks, looks like she's having some issues again there.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you go. Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Can I make a request for a budget appropriation for some technology in the next session?
Yeah, I was just thinking that. I, I will say, I think there is, there is an awareness and certainly a sensitivity to the fact that, that cities and counties are struggling. And so at the state level.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Perhaps if your connection holds, we will be able to hear you. Or not. So there's definitely an awareness of that and sensitivity to that. I think we'll try, you know, certainly everything we can to make sure that we're evaluating new policy proposals through that lens and, and looking at impacts that, that things might have at the local level. Because we are very aware of the budget struggles at the local level as well.
Does anyone else have any, Deputy Mayor Zornz?
This is kind of along the lines of unfunded mandates. When we're, when we're talking about, and this is just, you know, putting it on your radar. I'm sure other people have talked to you about this before. But when the community and the city and the state at large ask for more sensitivity out of our law enforcement and we've got the navigator program and we're, we're trying to work towards a restorative court. There's a huge difficulty. A huge difficulty in finding no room at the end for services that we need on mental health and drug addiction, effective. Space of effective. So if it, if it gets on your, if there's an opportunity to discuss it, that I think both Bothell and the state at large would appreciate more aggressive addressing of that on a state level. And you know, if you said we would have to bring the government in on it, I would, that wouldn't surprise me because it's a big problem. But I, I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, and I'll add in response to that, that I think there's been an awareness for quite a while now that, that that's a need that, that we just, we don't have capacity that we need for many of those services. And so we've been trying to build that up over at least the past several years, but certainly not there yet. And, and as you point out, that fits in with a lot of, a lot of the changes that we want to make for more effective and more appropriate responses to people. You know, that's, it's part of the system that we need to build to make that possible.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Senator, for all your work that you do on behalf of the community of Bothell and the North Shore area. Is, when we talk about the navigator program, we know how important that is to the Bothell community in the region, the North Shore region for that, for that matter. But I wanted to know, is there, is there opportunities for grants or funds that we may be able to realize here in the North End to help us with those shortfalls?
I'll certainly, I'll, I'll take a look for that and follow up with you. I don't, I don't know of anything offhand, but, but I, yeah, I can, I can certainly have staff check that out and get back to you on that.
Okay. And then the diversity and equity issue. We know that with all the things that are going on nationally right now and regionally and locally here, opportunities to be able to bring people in to assist our community and having those conversations, any type of grant funding, that would be available to communities, especially Bothell, to help facilitate some of those costs. For having those conversations would be good as well. Also, something obviously, you know, I'm very passionate about is, you know, youth getting out and staying active. But I think in our community, understanding if there's any, be any grants available for parks and recreation in the, in the near future. I know parks is probably one of the first things that gets cut. But it's also something that we need to get, to be able to have, you know, folks within our community get out and stay. But it's also something that we need to get to be able to have, you know, folks within our community get out and stay active. And as you know, we're in a shortfall right now in some of our sports fields. And, you know, Parks and Rec has has taken a big hit. But those those places are are how people get out and stay active and can and get out, get fresh air rather than being being cooped up. So just understanding kind of how that looks, maybe in the in the long term session, what we can as communities to help support you and making sure that we're we're supporting each other, both locally and at the state level. And lastly, I just want to, I just want to say, you know, the city manager covered a few things and our director, finance director, covered a few things on on the on the work that they're doing internally here. But I want I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to celebrate how difficult it is for all of the cities to get through what they're getting through, but the amazing work that we're doing here. We were caught up in these these conversations on a lot of negative right now. And the city staff, us as council members, we're we're dealing with a very chaotic and and toxic society right now. And I want to make sure that we continue, all of us, both locally and at the state level, having conversations on the good work that we're doing also, so that the negative things that are happening within our communities aren't the only thing that's taking over the the media, pretty much, right? So what can we do? Just making sure we're continuing to have these these conversations on the great work that we're doing, the great work that you guys are doing up at the state level on behalf of our communities, because we're in a different climate right now. But the work that we've been doing, that at least I've been doing over the past four to five years, six years with you and others up at the state level, hasn't changed. We continue to do that work, even though we have toxic times. And we need to make sure that we're celebrating all the hard work that all of us are doing, especially in those the city hall, to make sure that our community understands that that there's that we're we're there and we're doing it. So I just want to make sure that we at least have an opportunity to to talk with all of you at the state level and continue that conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. And and thanks for for accentuating that. I I agree. That's that's an important thing to focus on. And and to to be aware that that people are working day in and day out to to keep things working. And and that's that's really critically important right now. You you also mentioned the Parks and Rec funding. And in a normal budget year, the the upcoming session, we, you know, will be doing the biennial budget. So under normal circumstances, there are several grant programs in the capital budget at the state level that that I'd be directing you to. Given the pretty unusual budget circumstances right now, it's not clear to me yet what level of funding is going to be available for those. So so I'll certainly follow up as we get closer to session to to let you know about some, you know, any potential opportunities there. But but yeah, it's it's not at all clear yet what things are are really going to look like because of the budget situation. So so more to come on that.
I'm back. Can anyone hear me? Yay. Well, I just wanted to mention that on the Local Government Committee, we're trying to do a lot of work to help make some of the funding opportunities and REIT and those sorts of funding more flexible, so that cities have a little more flexibility in using money that they're already collecting for different things. And that I think that also includes money that we collect through the hotels. So and because they're it's pretty prescriptive right now. And so we're looking at different funding sources and how we can make that more flexible. So that's something that we're working on. I also wanted to mention that I've been reaching out and asking for ideas, creative ideas, that cities could perhaps give give the Local Government Committee in terms of ways to make things run more efficiently or ways that the state could help cities be more efficient and how they spend their money. Revenue is difficult right now. Expenditures, you know, you can only do so much. But if there are creative ways, whether it's the permit process or other other ways with best available science, that we can make things easier for cities to to be more efficient and save money. I'm looking for ideas, so please let me know. And I will say, one of the things that I've learned is when it comes to buffers in critical areas, we don't have to do best available science and spend that hundred thousand dollars to do that if we if we simply take the Department of Ecology's recommendations for buffers. So that's one way that the state has allowed for us to save money. So that's something we might think about as we move forward with those things. But I'm, again, open to any ideas that staff might have in regards to ways to help cities be more efficient, save money, or things that are getting in the way of us being more efficient. So if staff has any ideas, please reach out.
Thank you. Glad that you could get the technology issues resolved. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have a question, and and I don't know what the protocol is here, so I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask a question. But I wanted to follow up on something Senator Stanford said regarding the capital budget. And I'm just curious. I know that there is revenue shortfall on the operating side of things and that the capital budget is a function of the operating budget. And I've also heard that the capital budget is looking to be more of a kind of economic stimulus or economic, yeah, maybe basically job job generator. So I'm just curious, if in your conversations with your colleagues, if you've heard anything about a more robust capital budget or if it's more along the lines of what you were alluding to earlier, where it is going to be a little bit more on the conservative side?
Sure. Yeah, no, you're you're exactly right. There there is an interplay between the operating and capital budgets. And as far as the the bond part of the capital budget, I think there is a a desire to try to make that as robust as possible, exactly as you described, so that we can help counter the recessionary impacts that we're seeing. At the same time, a lot of the capital budget is is not bond funded, but actually revenue funded. And so those areas, we may see some of those resources being diverted toward the operating budget to fix the problems there. And that's, I mean, that's something that can get kind of touchy, depending on which revenue sources one talks about. I've been very opposed over the past several years of sweeping a lot of those revenue sources to the operating budget. And, you know, many of these things are are programs that were set up with specific fund funding sources and and trying to just maintain those things, like the Public Works Trust Fund. So so there'll there'll be some interplay there. And it's just, you know, there's so many kind of unanswered questions at this point about what the what revenues are going to look like, you know, what the resource levels will will look like. But I think I think there will be, as you mentioned, an effort to try to see how we can maximize the impact of the capital budget to to create jobs during the downturn and and counteract some of the the negative pressure on the economy and the unemployment rate. So so that being said, yeah, it's it's kind of a question of how things get prioritized between between different directions that that could go. I imagine some of that is going to be aimed at schools and dealing with some of the issues that schools are dealing with around the spaces that they have. And of course, a lot of that depends on what schools are trying to do around the state in terms of having students come back in in person or in in hybrid models, if they get to that. So so we'll kind of see how that develops between now and and session. But but I think there will be, there will certainly be a lot of programs that are are getting funded and and, you know, a lot of those grant programs, I expect to to still see good funding in them. So and and, you know, we may have efforts to to set up something new specifically to respond to the pandemic as well. So so that we'll just have to kind of adapt as we go.
Could I add some an update about transportation? I just wanted to mention that revenues are obviously down for express toll lanes, which could impact the bonding of the tolls for the project to expand express toll lanes from 522 to 527. Right now, they're down, but the final kind of assessment will, I I think, happen. Well, another assessment along the way will happen in November. They'll take numbers and make projections off of the toll revenue in November and then be doing studies. But that may severely impact the the scope of the expansion on on 405. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that 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 may be a coming issue, that we're not able to have the entire scope of what we had thought we would get when the tolls originally bonded. So I'll keep you up to date on that, but that's potential disappointment coming our way.
All right. Any other questions or comments here? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, city manager, do we know, like last year, do we have any success stories? I think we had a bridge and we had some funding for the senior center. Can we talk about some of the success stories that we had last year? Can you talk to that, Senator or Representative Doer?
Are you speaking to, you would like me to share with them? Is that the question?
Yeah, yeah, just how we kind of work together and some of those success stories.
Yeah, absolutely. So as Councilmember McNeil mentioned, our pedestrian bridge at the Park of Bothel Landing is a huge success. The new bridge is in place. The old bridge has been removed. We're just waiting for some delayed railings, and it should open up this fall. Just a just a really important project for downtown Bothel for our community. It's our logo, and we received state funding and additional state funding in the short session to be able to fully fund that project. So we're very grateful for that. There's a lot of things that have been going on. Our downtown cleanup, the state contributed to that as well. That's been a huge financial lift for for our small community. When the downtown revitalization was envisioned, you know, in the late 2000s, the cost and magnitude of that cleanup, I don't think anyone could ever have imagined. And, you know, we're 10 years later, and we're still have several properties that are that need to be cleaned up. And we have some agreed orders. We're making progress, but we're probably still looking at millions of dollars to go. But one property is has a purchase and sale agreement on the council agenda tonight. That's can be sold, so that's very exciting. And again, you know, support from the Department of Ecology through MACHDA monies and the state has been really helpful in in helping us achieve that. We've had, we've had lots of great successes, you know, our operations ability. And we all forget COVID has sort of taken our our most of our attention, but we had a major snow event. And again, our our ability of our public works crews to be able to clean our roads and and get traffic around in Bothel during that period of time safely. I just couldn't be more impressed. The work that we continue to do with the Navigator program, we got it up and running. We hired a program manager. We've hired several navigators, and that's now working in in five or six cities in the region, something we're very, very proud of and just delighted to have that program. And and people around the agencies around the state are looking at that. Our police department was reaccredited. We're only one of 50, 52 or 57, I believe it's 57, out of 200 and somewhat odd, 241 police agencies in the state of Washington to have that accreditation. That is a heavy, heavy lift. And so we're very proud of our police department to be able to achieve such a high bar of professionalism and and how we do business. That's a it's a very high bar to reach. Our Public Works Department is looking at that same type of accreditation, working on achieving a similar, many high bars to be able to achieve a certification like that. Our fire department has a five-year strategic plan that they each year have been working to accomplish. So we've we have really seen some great successes. Our Parks and Recreation, we had to lay off our recreation individual who was very, very talented, and it was hard to see her go as as it was to see the other 13 people that we had to lay off. But, you know, our parks crews continue to be out there and take care of our beautiful open spaces and our parks. And obviously, the former Wayne Golf Course continues to be a gem. We had, you know, assistance from the state and local from the county to have purchased that, as well as North Creek Forest. So, I mean, the list is is long and proud. So thank you, Councilmember McNeil, for the opportunity to share some of those really great successes.
Yeah, and it's just, I appreciate you sharing that, and it more or less for Senator Stanford and Representative Doer and Representative Kloba, who is not on the call. It's just the power of us all working together on behalf of our community. It's it's eye-opening experience for me. It's humbling to be able to do that with you. I continue to look forward to doing more on behalf of our community. So I just wanted to to have the city manager share some of the positive things that have happened in our community this year, because so often we forget about them with the turmoil that we go through. So thank you from the bottom of my heart to both of you for all your hard work and efforts that you're putting in on behalf of our community.
Yeah, Rep. Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to extend. I've received a text from Rep. Kloba. She had a technical difficulty. She just couldn't get her computer running and wasn't able to join us. But she sends her deepest apologies, and I'll make sure that I update her on on the conversation. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. And I appreciate Councilmember McNeil pointing out all of the positives, because, boy, in this time where where everything's hard, it's nice to be reminded of the good things. So thank you for that.
All right, well, I think ending it on a high note like that is definitely a good way to go out. So so Senator Stanford, Rep. Doer, thank you very much for, you know, giving your valuable time to us today to allow us to share our updates and hear from you and what's going on down in Olympia. Shelley, thank you for coming and sharing your wisdom and all your knowledge of what's of being our go-between for Bothel and Olympia. Did you have something you wanted to add in?
Yeah, I just wanted to let our legislators know that city staff right now we're in the process of identifying what the city's priorities are going to be for the upcoming legislative biennium. And so we do anticipate, we're going through the process where make recommendation and city council has the opportunity to review that and provide input. And and once we have a finalized legislative agenda, we do hope to have a follow-up meeting similar to this, but maybe with less technical difficulties, to brief you on those priorities and to also kind of brainstorm how we can, again, continue that partnership to the benefit of the Bothel community.
Definitely. Thank you. I I think we've these past two years have had a very successful relationship between our representatives in Olympia and our our city. So I attribute that, you know, partly to you, Shelley, and your guidance and and just the great staff that we have here at the city and the leadership of a city manager. So with that, any other items, City Manager, or? All right, well, let's. Councilmember McAuliffe? You are muted.
Hold on, sorry. Okay.
You look good now.
Good, okay? Can you hear me? I'm muted. I'm muted. No. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm in session, and that you care very much about the city of Bothel.
Looks like it muted you again. Looks like it muted you again.
I'm on. Hear me?
Rosemary, I've unmuted you, so we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. So I'm sorry, did you?
I'm not touching it. I don't know what she's doing.
Oh, my.
I feel her pain. I keep pushing this button and nothing works.
We can hear you. Councilmember McAuliffe, we'll let Laura unmute you if you will give it a try. Or not.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Nope. All right. Technology wins for today. All right, well, we'll wrap up this meeting. Councilmember McAuliffe, maybe if you do a computer restart before our general, maybe that will help with some of the issues. But other than that, thank you, everyone. And we will adjourn for our special meeting.